From the data for myself, I'd just like to note them. So let's see here compared to New Hampshire schools with similar enrollment numbers KS has the highest proficiency. It also has the highest average teacher salary, nearly the highest cost per pupil, and nearly the lowest student staff ratio. Compared to New Hampshire schools with similar socioeconomic demographics KS has middle high proficiency. It also has the highest average teacher salary, the second highest cost per pupil, and the lowest student staff ratio. Our STAR assessment data from February show variable reading proficiencies ranging from 100% proficiency in fourth grade to 52% proficiency in first grade. The STAR data show fairly consistent proficiencies in math. Overall, and across the two tests, that is STAR and SAS, about three-fourths of our students are proficient in reading and math, and about one-fourth are not. Okay. Are there any other questions about the reports? Before we move on?
Ms. Florence has a question.
Ms. Florence, go ahead. Go ahead, Taylor.
Will that be in the minutes?
Will what be in the minutes? The reports?
Yeah.
Well, we haven't addressed that question. It's possible that there'll be a motion to attach the reports to the minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I moved to attach the minutes to the minutes, the STAR data and the full budget to performance data set provided by the superintendent office to the board in February, not the partial data set that's in the meeting packet. So I moved to attach those to the minutes.
I'll second.
Second.
Any discussion of the motion?
Real quick question, the second, the second document you were talking about, is that the one that you emailed to us today?
Yeah, so I emailed, I made an email to you yesterday or today.
Yeah.
The document because the, the, the material that was in the packet was half of the available data.
No, I understand that. I just, you had said it was the one that the superintendent sent back in February, and I wasn't here in February. So I just want to make sure that's the document that I have.
That is exactly the one that I sent you.
Thank you.
All right, so I think we were, I was asking whether there was discussion of the motion. I guess that was discussion of the motions. Is there any other discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Jenny, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jonathan, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes, and so the material will be attached to the minutes. Okay, remote.
Sorry, Tim, could you also send that to me? Because I don't have the full document.
I will, let me just write myself a reminder here.
Thank you.
Also, Chelsea, do you have, do you have the material from? That is the letter, well, you must have the letter from the rec. I'm sorry, there's, there's a lot of noise there. Taylor, Taylor, would you mute, would you go and mute theirs? Hi, Taylor. There you go, thanks. So Chelsea, let me see, you, you must have the letter from the rec committee that was in the, that was in the packet.
I did.
But was the East Kingston KS lunch stuff, was that in the packet?
I don't think it was, and I had actually, there's a chat message. Did you want to make a motion to include that?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, I guess I hadn't done that, so. Well, let's see, let's, I, I suggest we revisit the question so that I can make a motion to attach that to the minutes, is that all right?
Oh, we did. You said this attached, it's in our agenda and the other information, I thought it was just assumed.
Not, not the lunch.
Not the lunch thing. We did the rec thing.
That just came through.
Okay, so let's return to that. So I moved to attach the correspondence between myself and East Kingston regarding the lunch program.
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Jenny?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Yes, okay, now we go back.
Great, Tim, can you send me that too?
Yep, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you that too.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, so let's see, we, we covered school board goals, and we attached that. So is it, is it the sense of the board that we've completed that goal for the year, that we've done what we wanted to do?
I think so. I mean Jenny really didn't make the goals, but from what I've seen, I think we've met them all.
Okay. Do you agree, Jenny?
Yeah, as far as I can tell.
Okay, I agree too, so then we'll declare ourselves done with the goal.
Done, yay.
All right. Remote learning update.
Yeah.
I suppose this will be the last one. At least the last.
That is so optimistic of you, Mr. Goliski. I appreciate that optimism.
Absolutely.
I'm very much hoping.
So, remote learning concluded on June 4th, yes. And we had a lovely retirement drive by for Ms. Valone, so that students and families had the opportunity to say goodbye to her after 19 years in Kensington. Also, at that time, all of the school learning resources that families borrowed or that we gave out, they were returned, although some families have chosen to hold on to their iPads. There are a few students who are still participating in some summer learning opportunities that's still remote, so they've held on to some of their devices in order to participate in some of those learning opportunities. All of the students' personal belongings were returned to families at that time, so teachers had gone back into classrooms and cleaned out their cubbies and desks and got the snow boots that were still in the hallway and that sort of thing. And so all of that was returned to the students on Thursday as well. Yesterday, all of our remote learning narratives were emailed to families, so families had a chance to receive that from the teachers as far as what skills students had worked on during the last 12 weeks. So all of our families received those yesterday, they went out at about 5:00. We are having some more conversations about fifth grade celebration. We're thinking and targeting perhaps the last week in June, but nothing is set in stone yet, but we are still, still continuing to have conversations about having a face-to-face celebration, or I don't know, mask-to-mask celebration, I'm not sure. And then I just did, wanted to mention that a survey went out to parents prior to the end of school, asking for feedback about the return, the return to school and what was most important to families in thinking about the return to school. We had 98 responses, which is, which is amazing, so I'm really pleased that our parents took that seriously, and just about every single family in Kensington replied. So I think our parent rep to the remote, or the return to school committee had some really good information to share last Friday with her, with her committee from the Kensington parents, so that was good. Not, not surprising childcare is a large concern for parents, should there be any remote in the future, that was a very large priority and concern. But I think we all, we all knew that, but there was any, about 50% of our families said that it would significantly impact their ability to work, and another 30% of our, or 25% of our families said it would be difficult to find childcare. And then there was about 20, don't quote me on numbers, another percentage of families who childcare wasn't an issue, but a good 75% of our families said childcare would be a problem if there was any remote learning in the future.
Okay, thank you, Becky. Are there any questions about the report?
Now, let's hope we get back to school.
All right, so I have a request to jump ahead to the financials, and if my colleagues are okay, we'll go ahead to the financials.
That's great.
All right, Molly, financials, please.
All right, yeah, Michelle and I have to do a stratum right after this in a few minutes. So the first item on the agenda is manifest. Did anybody have any questions? You can either send your approval via email, or Michelle and I are back in the office, we're working part in the office, part from home. I'll be there Tuesdays and Wednesdays from 8:00 to 2:00. So if you prefer to sign hard copy, you do have that option.
Oh, that's optional, you don't need us to come in.
Or you can do it email if you'd like to continue doing email. I know some people prefer to have the hard copy signature, and we'll attach email approvals if you prefer email.
Is my Adobe sign okay?
That's fine.
Okay, so I have just one question about the manifest. The last time I asked the manifest for those to be in the packet, or the board to have them ahead of time, and I had to ask for them again this time. So I asked that going forward, that the manifests are always in the pre-meeting packet for our future meetings, because it provides an opportunity for board members to monitor actual spending, and it's only in public that we can discuss any questions that might arise, and we might not know those questions if we haven't seen the manifest. So I asked that those be included in the packet.
Yep, and I communicated, yep, and I communicated that to Kayla, who will be sending out the board pack starting July 1st, and she is well aware to include those in all future packs. Originally, I did not include them this, this go around, because we were going back in the office, and I was thinking that people would be able to come in and sign, but based off of feedback, since these meetings are still remote, we'll provide those electronically still.
Okay, so, great, so let's go to the financial report.
So what I, so what we did earlier today, Michelle and I sent you a document today. So what I'll quickly do is walk through the first page of that. It's an updated financial of what was included in your package. So the first line shows you how we finished last year. And that's important, because if we give back various amounts, whether it's more or less, it affects how much we have to raise in taxes, so to keep the tax rate consistent, you might want to consider keeping the amount you give back consistent. You don't have to, but it's just an idea to stabilize the tax rate. So with all of your revenues and credits, Kensington's looking at an unreserved fund balance of $88,790. However, if you remember, in March, we voted the first $20,000 goes to the warrants, the trust funds, so that would bring you down to $68,790. And so what, what Michelle and I did is, we also realized that we don't know what's going to happen with COVID-19 next year. We don't know if we're going to have to buy masks or thermometers. However, we do know that a retirement did come in late. Actually, I don't even know if we've talked about that in the public meeting yet.
We haven't yet talked about it, it's on the agenda, but yeah.
So I won't say any names, but we did include the cost if we, that will have to be paid next year, so it's an idea if, if we want to free up space from something we have to pay next year, to pay it out of this year's budget, since we do have the remaining funds. That way, if we have to buy masks, again, I don't know what COVID, and nobody knows what COVID's going to look like, so by moving the retirement into this year, if we have the available funds, it could free up space for next year for the unknown, so that's why we've listed it here as an option for you. And at the bottom, we listed what the previous four years were that we returned. So last year, we only returned $70,000, but you can see the previous three years before that, we returned significantly more. Now, this is a very unique year with a global pandemic, so we wanted you to have all the options and the availability of what you would like to choose in the direction you would go in.
Okay. I have a question. So one thing I didn't quite understand was, when I looked through the tables, the financial tables, the bottom line there says the amount remaining after everything is encumbered is $114,542. And pardon?
Oh, sorry.
And I was wondering how, if you could help me reconcile that with the projected unreserved fund balance here in the table, which is $88,790.
Yep, so the difference is your revenue. So if you see where we have the expended expenses to date, the 2.639, you'll see that matches the third from the right column, the 2369, and then the encumbered amount is $416,000, is the encumbered expenses on the sheet, on the summary sheet. Those two added together are your total projected expense. But because the revenue is less than we had, or the base, the tax rate has given us less revenue, the available fund balance is less than your $114,000.
Okay.
So the expense report that you do get each, each time, because again, we do vote on only the expense side, what we vote on in March is only expense, not revenue, so what's included in your board pack each month is the expense side. This calculation that I provide you today includes the revenue too.
Right, all right. So revenue basically was short, obviously, because of COVID.
Um, so I think, I don't, I'd have to look back to see exactly which areas of the revenue was short. I don't necessarily want to jump to say it's because of COVID. Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, was the food service revenue less than we thought, or was the food service, in a lot of other districts, we've seen the food service is a big contributor to it. I don't know if that's the case in Kensington. The food service revenue is definitely lower, not having received revenue from the, from the students for three months, yeah. Yeah. So that was a big part of it, and then other things that we've had a really difficult time billing Medicaid due to the changes in laws, that I don't have it all detailed in front of me, but I could easily put that together and send it to the board.
Okay, any other questions about the financials?
No, right now.
Okay, I would suggest that we address this question about the retirement money, the retirement payout, whether it's going to be in this year's budget or in the next fiscal year's budget. My preference is to put it into this year's budget. Are there any thoughts on that?
Mine is as well, Tim, I agree with you 100%.
Molly, that's what you recommended, right?
It's a suggestion, I know last time we did talk about maintenance projects, however.
That's, that's what I was thinking about too, okay.
But the thing is, is you have to pay this retirement, it's contractual.
Yeah.
So maintenance stuff, while I would have probably come to you with a list of maintenance items, this item came to light, because it was very late notified, so when this item came to light, it didn't make sense for us to bring a list of maintenance items as well, because this is contractual, and you have to pay this next year regardless. Whereas the maintenance, you don't necessarily have to do.
So we would be getting a jump on that, we would be paying it this, this year, but it's next year, so we would be kind of freeing up that money for next year.
Yeah, and we, well, we didn't budget for this next, well, we didn't budget for this next year, because we didn't know about this when we did.
So actually, we didn't, this was an anticipated retirement for the end of next year, and if you recall, I believe the Kensington Teachers Association submitted a letter allowing the board to pay it out of the 2122 as a one-year exception to what the contract said. So I would definitely recommend that this is paid out of this year's fund, because that is actually what, how their contract reads.
Oh, okay.
So the exception that they gave, that they submitted the letter was for, to pay the anticipated retirements that we already know about for next year.
Okay, Molly, do you need?
For the following year.
Great, thanks for that reminder, Becky. So Molly, do you need a motion from the board, or is our stated consensus good enough to go ahead with that?
Chris, I'm not sure what we need, if it's a motion or no.
They should, they should make a formal motion to pay it out of this year's, this year's.
Okay, I make a motion, I move to pay the retirement payout out of the 2019, 2020 fiscal year budget.
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Jenny, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, is there anything else you need, Molly?
Nope, the only other thing is, you'll notice in the pack, I believe Marshall would have included the, the audit checklist, again, that's nothing we need to talk about tonight, it's just an annual requirement, Tim, if you remember, you completed it last year. We did receive it quite late last year, so you probably just completed it a few months ago, but when this fiscal year closes, we'll just need that completed, and if you didn't receive the copy, just let me know, and I can send it to you.
I did receive, it's the MS22, right?
No, that's just separate, separate, which I, actually, I should talk about it, so.
He wouldn't have received it, because Jen Ramsey was the chair at the time, and it was the board chair that signed off on it.
Oh, okay, sorry.
They haven't cleaned it, and it wasn't part of this packet, so we can put it on for a future date.
Okay, yeah, no, and like, we, we don't even need to put it on the agenda, it's really just something, I thought this would be the last meeting for the summer, and I just put it in all the packs, but, sorry, I forgot that Jen was the chair last year. It's, it's an audit questionnaire that our auditors require the board to complete the chair of the board each year, so I'll send that to you, Tim, and if you have any questions, feel free to contact me. The other thing was the MS22 I sent out. In my email, like I said, it's the exact same information as the MS26, since there were no amendments made to our budget. It's just purely just another report that the Department of Revenue needs, and that one does need actual signatures on it, it just needs a majority of the board, the superintendent and the clerk, so if two of you are able to come over to the SAU office just to sign that, or you can, the, our DRA rep also said you could actually sign it and scan your own page, and she'd just compile the signatures. So Jonathan, if you do want to do your Adobe sign, that's fine, and you can send it to me that way.
Sure, that's, it's easy for me to do that, it just works.
Okay, so I did look at the MS22, and I'm prepared to sign it, so if you would send me and the other board members a reminder, then we can resolve that for you.
Yep, sure, it's all printed, it's actually sitting in Michelle's office in the Kensington pile with your manifest right now.
And I have it, right, that was part of the packet you sent us.
Yep, I sent that when I sent out the manifest, so you would have it.
And you'll be in the office again on Tuesday, is that right?
Yep, I'll be there Tuesdays and Wednesdays, because Jen.
The MS22, correct? That's, I have it. Four pages?
It's, it's about four pages, yep.
Yep, okay, yeah, I'll Adobe sign it and get it over to you.
Okay.
Okay. Did anyone have any other questions before Michelle and I go to stratum?
Um, no.
Okay, I think you're good to go, thanks.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you, Molly.
Bye, guys.
Thank you.
All right, we'll, we'll jump back now, let me see where we were, we had done remote learning update, then we jumped ahead, so now we're at 5.3 future meeting dates. So in the packet, there's a a table of possible future meeting dates. Let me see if I can find that. Right. Yeah, so it lists various meeting dates, it looks to me like it sticks with the convention of going with the second Wednesday of the month. But there's no entry for July and August. And before I mentioned that, I thought that it would be a good idea if we continue to meet every month in the summer because of the unusual workload, and also the fact that we're required to meet at least once every two months. So I want to put forward the suggestion that we go with Wednesday, July 8th at 6:00 PM. And also, bucking the trend a little bit, go a little bit earlier in August, because I don't want to be late to making some important decisions about the reopening. So how about Wednesday, July 8th, and Wednesday, August 5th?
Sounds fine. 6:00 PM, or are we doing it at 5:15?
Yeah, thanks.
Um, I'm, either would be okay for me. Jonathan, you were the one who asked for the 5:15, is that, would that work out for you?
Well, 6 o'clock is better, I did 5:15 to be, obviously. I was trying to do something, I can't, oh, well. 6 o'clock is best, let's put it that way.
Okay, well, Jenny, is it okay for you to do 6 o'clock?
I'm fine with either of those.
What about Becky, Chris?
Are these remote, or?
Right now, they are.
I think we're gonna, my plan is that we're going to continue for, remote for now. Okay, all right, so let's write in those dates. So those are Wednesday, July 8th at 6 o'clock. And Wednesday, August 5th. And remember that that one is the first Wednesday, it's not the second one. Okay. There's also an open spot for our public hearing on the budget. And often, we have a, a school board meeting immediately after that. So I suggest we pencil in Wednesday, January 13th for the public hearing and the subsequent meeting. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so Wednesday, January 13th for the public hearing and the subsequent meeting.
Hold on, you're gonna have to repeat this stuff, because I'm typing things into my calendar, because I'll forget, if I write down somewhere, I'll misplace the piece of paper.
I'll go, I'll go through it one last time when we're done. And then there's the deliberative session and meeting. And that is usually coordinated with the town, we do it on the same day, but maybe we can just pencil that in, and then works to coordinate with them, and hopefully it works out. So how about Wednesday, February 10th for the deliberative session, and then subsequent meeting?
So what's happened in the last couple of years, there was the shift, Tim, if you remember, that we did not have a school board meeting just after the deliberative session, so that members of the board could participate in the town's deliberative session, and that we weren't trying to conflict with their meeting, so in the last couple of years, we've, we have had a separate February meeting.
Yeah, that's true, thank you for reminding me of that. So if it's okay with others, maybe we could just let that one go until we have a better chance to coordinate with the town on what it is that they want to do, and as Becky reminded us to schedule the meeting at some other time, so that people can attend the town, the town meeting, which usually happens after the school district meeting. Is that all right, to just leave it open for now?
Absolutely, that's, that's exactly what I would have recommended, based on Becky's statement, and we don't have the date yet from the town, because it has to fall within, also, there's legislation of what date it has to fall between, so I just want to make sure that we don't pick something that doesn't fall between those dates, so the rest of the calendar looks great. I'll, I'll type it up, Jonathan, and send it to you, so you actually have a printed version, so you can check your calendar, so don't, so don't stress too much.
Thank you. I don't want to screw up.
Yeah. I've got it all written down, I'll send it to you.
All right, so Chris is going to take care of you.
Thank you.
And also, if, if, if we have any say in the matter, I would, I would love for the public hearing and the deliberative sessions to not take place on the same date as the co-op hearing and deliberative sessions.
Okay, so.
Because that has happened before.
Yeah, it has, and so let's just have these, that January date penciled in, and it's, it's a long time from now, and it can be changed in the interim. I just wanted to, you know, get something on the books for now. But if there's a problem, we can do something about it.
Great, thank you.
All right, um, let's see, so last time, we had a, an update on school reopening and redesign, and we had expressed an interest in doing that. I put it on the agenda, and Chris was amenable to that, but upon consultation with other folks in the SAU, they removed it, figuring that they wanted to hold back until their reports were completely done. However, I would like to ask one single question in public of the superintendent's office, so I moved to add back school reopening and redesign to the agenda, so that I can ask that one question.
Second.
Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Jenny?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so the one question that I want to ask, and I don't necessarily expect an answer, no, anyway, is, is it the superintendent's understanding that the decision to adopt a plan for school at KS is under the local control of the Kensington School Board?
It's my understanding, Tim, that the joint board, a recommendation were made at the joint board meeting in mid-July to all of the boards at that time, for them, for their consideration.
So the joint board will make a recommendation, and the Kensington School Board will exercise its local control to make a final decision. and the Kensington School Board will exercise its local control to make a final decision. Is that right?
I think you worded just a little bit off. We will make a recommendation, the SAU will make a recommendation to the joint board on the reopening of schools, and then it will be discussed at the joint board level. However, I would believe that the, each, each district would have say and what they feel in regards to that recommendation.
So it's, it's my opinion that this question is and ought to be, at, at least in terms of KES, one that the Kensington School Board makes. Okay, any other, any other thoughts on that before we move on?
Well, my, my only thought is if that recommendation is being made to the joint board in mid-July, should we schedule our meeting after that meeting? Because I'm not sure, I'm not sure what we will be talking about on July 8th.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's a, that's a good point. So we'll, we'll look at scheduling our next meeting to happen after that then. And do we know when, do we know when that meeting is going to occur?
We do not. We talked about mid-July, Tim, but I have not been alerted to when that meeting will occur.
All right. So then I'm gonna suggest that we leave that July meeting open. And also because it looks like then it'll be in late July, let's scratch the, the meeting in early August and let's just leave it flexible for now. And we'll leave the determination of the date for the July meeting as something to be, to be determined and, and we'll decide on it at a later date when we know more. Is that all right with, with my colleagues?
Yep.
Okay, so we're back on the calendar question. So the July dates and, and the July and August dates are scratched and we're gonna figure those out later. So Chris, you have less to remind Jonathan.
Thank you.
All right. So new business, personnel. So it's, I regrettably publicly announced that Mrs. Valone has decided to retire. I want to express my gratitude and great respect for Mrs. Valone. It's my opinion that the music program, as long as I've been associated with KES, is the finest part of the KES curriculum. And I'd like to read her retirement letter into the record. So she writes on May 23rd, 2020, "To the members of the Kensington School Board and to Superintendent David Ryan." I think there's a lawnmower outside my, my house. I'm sorry if that's bugging people.
I can't hear it at all.
I can't hear it.
Okay, good. All right. "I write with very mixed feelings to submit my letter of retirement. I had planned to retire at the end of the 2020-2021 school year, but due to the ramifications of COVID-19, I am retiring at the end of the present school year. I have immensely enjoyed my 19 years of teaching music in Kensington and have been very proud to be a staff member of that amazing community of teachers. The parents and children in Kensington have been a source of great joy and I will miss everyone dearly. Sincerely, Christine Valone." Thank you very much, Mrs. Valone. Any questions about that?
No, just another thank you to Ms. Valone.
Ms. Valone is awesome. I had her with my daughter and my son the whole time and she was super. She taught my daughter, she picked up violin just so she could teach my daughter because she wanted to learn how to play. That's how special she is.
That's wonderful. That's KES.
And now my daughter is like a super violinist. So there you have it. It was her start.
Okay, so we have our own ramifications of this. So we dealt with one already. So there's the retirement payout. So I have, I have a question for, perhaps this actually was a question for Molly, I'm not sure. Are there any other budget consequences of, of this retirement?
No, what she reported in that financial report, Tim, is the total payout.
Okay. I have a question about what are we thinking about in terms of replacement? And in that regard, I want to add one thing, and that is that, just like in, in Mrs. Valone's letter, the music program is especially impacted by things like COVID-19 and infectious disease. Things like group singing or theatrical productions where people project their voice. The playing of woodwind instruments and brass instruments which collect spittle. Those are, those are all among the highest risk activities that one can do. And so I wonder about the replacement of this position and if maybe temporarily, maybe we would share a music teacher from another district due to the fact that the music program is going to be, I think, perforce impaired by the infectious disease, disease realities.
Do you mean just for this year?
Just temporarily for this year while, while we have infectious disease hot problems or potential problems. I don't, let me, let me make 100% clear that, like I said before, I think the music program has been the finest part of KES academics and I support it 100%. However, it's, it's my opinion, and it's my professional opinion as a scientist, that those activities are among the highest risk activities that one could do in the school in the coming months. Again, things like singing, group singing, theatrical, voice projection, and things like woodwind and brass instruments. So I put the question there, given, given the, that Mrs. Valone has decided to retire and that we have these, these problems with those activities and, and those aren't unique to us, does it make sense for us to share a music teacher with another district?
Tim.
On a temporary basis?
You have, each district has their own contracts, so that person would still have to apply and we'd have to accept them. Knowing some of the other districts, there's not, in halftime positions that were covered as they've all been filled in the other districts right now. So again, that would have to be someone that Becky would have to hire if they're on a halftime contract. But Kensington is a different contract, so we can't simply say that a person from Exeter, East Kingston or Newfields could simply be shared unless they are offered a Kensington contract.
Okay. Go ahead, Taylor.
You can absolutely teach music without having to sing to chorus together. You can teach it distance. You can do tapping, you can do rhyming, you can do, there's so many different things. I think any music teacher would be able to adapt music to not just it being blowing into an instrument where I just breathe those germs, et cetera, and even singing in a close. I think there's a way you could adapt that.
Yeah, I think that there are adaptations that could be made, but my point is that the scope of acti, the scope of activities will be limited more so than other things.
Well, I, I do want to point out, Tim, that most of the instrument playing is done outside of school hours. So our band practices and all of the music lessons on instruments are done outside of school hours. So that's not part of her regular curriculum. And we have received correspondence from the New Hampshire Music Education Coalition and the choral directors and the string. So we have received their statements on reopening and the music programs. And I think as Taylor was trying to point out, the adaptations that will need to be made in order to achieve the curriculum standards that they have. And perhaps there may need to be some changes as we've all had to think about how we change things a little bit. But, you know, I think that they have some good suggestions on how music programs can evolve in order to, to meet their music standards.
I hate to interject, but I've seen some great things from Mr. Cobb at TMS and, you know, there's, there's a way. We don't need to, I think we should look at not cutting up music teacher position.
I don't think he wants to cut it out. I think he wanted to just share temporarily till we get back to normal.
Right, exactly. I want the students to have music education and I'm glad to know that people are thinking about ways to adapt it. I'm just thinking that we could-
I think it needs to be readdressed anyway. The whole thing is a district-wide thing. There's better ways of doing it and, and fine tuning certain needs of different students and different things that I don't think the district has looked at. So it's kind of hard to address. And this might be a good time to do that since we're now in need of a music teacher.
This sounds to me like a curriculum question, though.
I think it's an infectious disease question.
Well, I mean, certainly, but, but how we're gonna handle the infectious disease piece with our curriculum?
Which you can absolutely handle.
You can do Zoom or FaceTime or whatever.
What would be the process right now?
Record our lessons over Zoom.
That's true.
What would be the process, what would be the process right now if, if we were not considering this? If we were just hiring, if, if it was a first grade teacher who left? If it, would, would we, would you, right now, Becky, are you looking for applicants? Are you?
Yeah, we're just in that process now. It should be, it should be posted. One of our other elementary schools also hired a music teacher. And so I've talked with him about the candidates that he already interviewed. So we've, I've got a small pile of positive applications already, so.
Okay.
Okay. So I am of a mind that's similar to Jonathan's, that given our, our situation, that it's a good time to assess what is possible and what our needs are, and that it should start with assessing what is possible, what our needs are before filling positions. I'd like to see that we consider that first and then go, and then go for hiring and not put the cart before the horse.
Tim, our, our needs aren't gonna change if we're gonna promote the whole student and music is a large part of the whole student, whether it's remote or whether it's in person. And so the recommendation the board would either be that we, we put a freeze on this position and we don't hire it or that we hire and that, you know, the, the curriculum and how that's delivered would be then on Ms. Rule and, and her curriculum with, with the teacher that is hired. So that, that's my question. Our position would not change. We, we feel that music is critical to the whole child and for each child to have that throughout our specials program, much like health, PE, art, music is essential. And now more than ever as, as we're learning remote. So that would be the piece from our office. So my, my question to you, are you as a board willing to freeze that position? But how we, we deliver that, that would be something that Ms. Rule is working with, with all principals on how we deliver all types of instruction, not just music instruction.
I think that the, the question is really not whether that's an essential part of education or not. I think we all believe that it is. It's a question of what is possible and what is it that we are going to do and therefore then what are our staffing needs in the short term for the position? And are they the same? And if they are the same, then exactly what is going to happen? How, how is that gonna happen? And if they're, and if they are not the same, then we should act accordingly.
Are you proposing that it will be different if we return remotely or are you proposing it would be different? That even when we, if we came back full face to face, it would be different?
I think that those, that's an example of the kind of unresolved question that makes our needs unknown, right? We don't have an answer to that. And so that, that then affects knowing what our needs are.
Well, we do know that we need a music teacher.
Yes, we do.
And, and we, and it's been discussed that, I, I think that's a really, I really liked how you are coming up with this alternative idea of sharing. I, I hate to use a cliched term, but that's very out of the box thinking, which is great, but it sounds like that's not necessarily going to be a possibility. So if it's not, then I'm not really sure what the question is. We still need a music teacher. So we would proceed with hiring one. Or are you thinking that we would? I mean, it's already a half, halftime position. So if it's not possible to share one with another district, what, what is your thought on that? Where, where are you going with that?
It's not clear to me that it is impossible, especially if there are other districts with a position open. I mean, those things could be coordinated together, right? That there's some flexibility.
Are there other districts? Did you say there are other districts with a, with a music position open right now?
That was a full-time position and it's already been-
Okay.
So there are no positions available, in other words. So, so we piece together with multiple schools when there's halftime positions and so we're sharing teachers, but that's because they're halftime at two different spots to make a full-time position. This is, this is a halftime position. And if you want to share, you would share it. But like I said at the beginning, this is a Kensington contract. You're hiring for Kensington music. And how that's, that's puzzled off with, with other schools, that, that would be coordinated with the principals on, on how that schedule is. But again, you have to hire for Kensington.
So it, I heard mentioned that, that right now the position is a halftime position. Is that right?
It is.
Okay. So colleagues, are you okay with going ahead with identifying candidates for a halftime position?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. It's not, it does not a lot of alternatives. Again, I guess, I was hoping we could kind of look at everything from scratch, but obviously that's not gonna happen because everybody's got their own program setup. I, I just know there's a, definitely a better way of giving better instruction to all students in the whole district, but that's a long, drawn-out thing, so it is what it is.
Are you talking about, Jonathan, are you talking about within, within the realm of remote?
Talking about the districts of SAU 16.
I understand that, but do you mean with remote or just with normal, regular?
Normal, regular music.
Okay.
Not, not remote. Remote is a temporary thing. We all know that.
And you're saying music specifically?
Correct.
Okay.
The whole music program really needs to be looked at and, and reinvented because there's better ways of doing it.
Okay. So this is a position, is my understanding, that requires nomination by the superintendent and election by the school board. Is that right?
Not over the summer unless you, we didn't have the meeting and then the superintendent can make that designation. But you as a board has said that you'd like that meeting to be able to have the final approval, Tim.
Right. So what we did is we made the arrangement that it's, that we're gonna go with the usual process unless the superintendent informs me that he has a nomination and we can't assemble a quorum within a week.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So then that's the way we're gonna handle it.
I'm, I'm very curious to hear what the, Jonathan, what your thoughts are on the music program. But I don't know if this is the place or time.
I don't know. It's, it's an SAU thing, but I, I really feel that if we had a, a couple of experts in a different, in different fields, band, string and early music education, like with the recorders and singing, et cetera, and it's set up and they have specific days in each school, then you could take these professionals and they could go amongst the districts and teach at those specific times in those specific areas and give them pointed instruction and improve it versus just having one, it's not really an expert, they're just giving general information. And I think it would be able to expand the music program and the knowledge of all the students go forward, especially at the high school and middle school. That's where it's suffering the most.
So you're saying that there, that the, the normal in-school music education where, where the teacher is teaching about rhythm and notes and theory and things like that would remain the same?
And then you would have expanded upon, correct.
But then you would have experts coming in, string, string, brass, woodwinds, et cetera.
Correct.
I mean, at the elementary level-
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to, we're, we're, I think, beyond the scope of the agenda. So I think, I think we've decided how to proceed on this agenda.
Yep.
And if we, if, if board members want to have that kind of conversation about that, you should suggest an agenda to me and I'm open to all those kind of things, but-
Perfect, thank you.
Not today. We can talk about it, but-
That's, that's great. I wasn't, I wasn't entirely sure how or when to have that conversation. So that's, that's fine. We can do that.
Make a request and it can be some other day. All right, let's see. So that was, where were we? That was new, new business. And we handled the business and financial. We did the manifest, we did the financial report. The facilities plan is the next one. Okay. Trying to find the material that I received earlier. Having a little bit of trouble finding it.
The priority list? The priority list?
Yeah. All right, now I have it. Okay. All right, so uh, Jenny and Jonathan, do you guys have that uh, that new list? It has it has updated costs. Some of those have changed. And it has a list. The the one thing that's not on there that was on the previous one that we looked at was the the retiling of uh, part of the floor.
When was that sent, Tim? Uh, one o'clock this afternoon.
Yeah, this afternoon.
You said retiling of the floors not on this?
No, we took that out of the budget, Tim, so that's not included. We did not. We already had taken that out for the.
I was just noting that um, last last time we had talked about it, but we had decided that we could we could forego that one. And so it doesn't appear in this list.
If I could just make the distinction that the is the list that you're looking at, the first item on there is the concrete?
Yep.
Yeah, it's this one.
So if I could just make the distinction that um, that is the only item that remains from this fiscal year. That was a project that we that we had budgeted for this year. That is not a project we budgeted for next year.
Thank you.
Yeah, the reason the reason we listed it at first because that needs to be poured because the shed is going to be built by students from S S T. So if we are back in person, that would still be a project that would be on their priority list to start out with. So that's why um, Ms. Rule and I decided to have that be the first thing on our priority list that the students at S S T can't do that project if there's no concrete being poured for that shed to go. And again, there's a cost savings about $4,000 by having the S S T students do it. And again, it's our students learning on site. What better way for for education? Um, so that's why that's included on this list for next year. So it's also a discussion if, you know, I know we we ate a large chunk of the unreserved fund balance with the with the retirement. Um, and and well done, but I didn't know if that's something you we would also talk about. Do we want to use $4,000 for this year? And get that done so that if we do return in full in September, we can start that and have that completed immediately.
Um, is this is this $4,000 in the in the encumbered? In the encumbered list already or is this in the?
No.
It wasn't encumbered because we didn't do it yet, Jenny.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so it seems like the first question to address is whether we want to do the uh, the concrete pouring. And to do that on this year's budget. Are there any thoughts among the board members on that?
Um, since we're trying to um, how how necessary is the storage shed for next year? Well, I mean, is this a priority because we had when when, you know, in the before times when everything may was normal and made sense? And uh, there wasn't a pandemic, we were just that was going to be what was next or is is the storage shed, we really need to get that done? And built next year or it would it be just as easy kind of to push it off for a year?
It is one of those things that we've been kind of kicking down the road for years.
Yep.
Uh, about five years ago, um, there was a second storage shed outside that was removed.
Okay.
So we actually, we had to remove it because of safety reasons because it um, allowed for access onto our roof. Um, and in that removal, it um, it basically wasn't salvageable. So we've been down an additional storage piece for about um, four or five summers now. And um, we've just kind of uh, been looking to replace that and get additional storage. And I know I did just have a conversation with Mr. Brackett. Um, in anticipating um, increased uh, supplies for cleaning for next year that he he was going to store some of these things because um, some of them need, we need to shift and some of the cleaning supplies need to be in the building in a more controlled setting and not like in the shed at the end of the um, at the parking lot. So um, we did just have that conversation about um, knowing he's going to have additional um, cleaning supplies that we were talking about where we're going to put all that.
Okay, thank you.
For me personally, the the reason that S S T students are going to do that for us and that they want to do that and they're going to get a learning experience. And then secondarily, we'll save a little bit of money, but uh, just that fact that the students are waiting to do it makes it for me a high priority.
Yeah, it is something we have been working with the S S T teacher all year. He's come out to the site. We've talked about it. Um, and he was planning on this being their first project when they return in the fall. So um, if that's not going to be their first project, we sort of need to let him know that because that's what he was planning on.
I just love that we're using the S S T students. I think that program is phenomenal, so I.
I agree.
Yeah.
So um, I'm gonna uh, say that we dispatched this one right now. So I move that we authorize the pouring of the concrete. And that uh, it'll come out of this year's budget and then we'll discuss the the remaining items.
I second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Jenny?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, so now to the rest of them. There's replace the water heater, H V A C, classroom ceiling, E R V. What does E R V stand for again?
Environmental.
That's the that's.
Fresh air, isn't it?
That's the ventilation.
Yeah.
Yeah, this event, energy recovery ventilation.
Okay, there we go. Energy recovery. You can tell she's looked at it a hundred times.
Ventilation, okay, thank you.
I built this house.
So I, it's my opinion that it's important. Uh, not only for our infrastructure updating, but also for health reasons that the H V A C and the classroom ceiling E R V projects get done this summer and paid for with next year's budget. I believe that 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 should happen.
Next year's budget?
Yeah, we budgeted it for it's it's a budget for next year's budget. So remember um, on July first.
Right.
Our fiscal year will begin. So what we just authorized for the concrete is to pay for it out of the budget that ends June thirtieth.
Yes.
Now what we're talking about is the budget that was passed back in March.
Yes.
And that will start on July first.
Yes.
So um, I think we should, we should uh, do the H V A C and the E R V and without without addressing the other ones, but I think that uh, we should do those.
I I disagree.
Okay.
Explain, water damage is nothing you want to mess with.
No, no, I'm not I'm not saying that we're skipping over the other ones. I'm just saying, can we agree that those two?
They're important.
Those two definitely.
Those two need to get done.
Yeah, no, I but I I I what I'm saying is I would put water heater before all of those.
Well, I I have a question. Is there is there? I know that we are 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 um, our leftover money for this for this year is pretty low, but I'm wondering if to try to make room in the budget if we can be doing any, maybe the water heater, we could do that with this year's budget as well. To so that we can take it, so it gets done, but it's gives us ten thousand or what is it?
Keep keep kicking that can down the road.
No, Jonathan, I'm saying do it now.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you.
In the current, in the current year's.
Already dwindled our budget, our fund down anyway, and fifty eight grand isn't going to make a big difference to our anybody's.
Well, we're we're at forty seven now after the.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's not going to make any big difference to anybody's tax bill, so.
And it's only because we have to, I I completely agree that the HVAC and the and the the ceilings. I I'm I'm with you on everything. I'm wondering if we should put the water heater on this year's budget. What do you think about that?
I'd like to.
I would not like to do that.
I'm just very nervous about, I know I have a, let's put it this way, I have a water heater that the core is bad on and it leaks and it leaves a big mess all over the basement and these and there's no, you cannot tell when one of these things will go. And when they go, it's a big mess and then there's no hot water in the school. So it's one of those things I just do not believe we should even um, take the chance on. Strong opinion about that.
So yeah.
Is it that you don't think that we?
I think we're in agreement that we should do the water heater, right? Uh, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so now the remaining question is whether to pay it from this year's budget or next year's budget. Is that right?
Right.
Okay, I I think I think we should pay for it out of next year's budget.
And why? Why is that?
Uh, because I prefer to give back whatever we can to the town. And and we all, we planned it. We planned it that way. I think we should stick with it. We've made some exceptions. But um, I I don't favor making more.
Before we knew that there was going to be a global pandemic and am I right that we are concerned about having enough money to pay for unanticipated supplies, et cetera, next year? Um, this would be one way to avoid the potentiality of going over budget and having to ask more from the taxpayers. That's that's my concern.
So Taylor, Taylor, you uh, you're looking to jump in. Go ahead.
Um, don't know how water take a long time to get there. I don't think we want anybody to know that.
I'm sorry, uh, we did, the the audio is a little bit uh, garbled. Could you repeat that?
We keep getting shoved like back with our maintenance, like silly little like the the least that we can do each year for maintenance. Our hot water is not efficient. It's not even sufficient, I think, for kids to wash their hands, like to just.
So Taylor, I think the board is in agreement that we're gonna, we're gonna get, I think we're in agreement that we're gonna get that project done this summer, right?
Yeah.
So I think we're, I think we're all, we're all on board with that. We're gonna replace the water heater this summer, okay? So now we're just talking about the details of paying for it, which is not an insignificant detail.
No, it's not. And I and I completely, I very much respect wanting to give as much back to offset next year's uh, appropriation, but um, I just, I'm I'm nervous about all the unanticipated expenses next year.
All right, so let's let's um, handle them one by one. So um, is there a motion regarding replacing the water heater?
Make a motion, we replace the water heater.
And pay for it out of where?
Out of the uh, forty thousand dollars that's remaining.
The current year's budget.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, I would prefer that it is paid out of this current year, but I want to make clear that I support doing the water heater this summer regardless.
I'm sorry, I just want to be clear. You just you just said, I think you said that the wrong way. You you would prefer it be paid out of next year's budget.
Yeah, if I said something different, I meant what you said.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so let me clarify.
And if we want to talk about that, that's great. I'm not, I I'm always open.
I I guess I'm right. If you can say that if if we are going to pay, we're going to do it this summer for sure. Uh, before the kids are back in school with next year's budget that starts in June, then I guess I'm good with that.
I'm I'm a little bit confused. Could you repeat that?
Can I just interject? Don't you go ahead with the motion on on the table first before we go any further?
Oh, we're we're having discussion of the motion.
Uh, Jonathan is just saying as long as it gets done this year, he's okay with it being paid from next year's budget or this year's budget.
Yeah, I just want it done, period.
Okay, yeah, and I'm okay with that. So it's your it's your motion, Jonathan. So what is your motion?
So my motion is that we replace the water heater this summer, either I I don't, either with the leftover money from this year's budget or what's planned for next year's, but let's get it done this summer.
Okay.
Okay, all just for Claire, for clarity's purpose, I will then amend that to include that it would get done and paid for out of this year's budget. But in our discussion, can I ask what uh, what the opinion is? Uh, if if Becky or Chris have any input on this?
I'm with you Jenny, that taking the six thousand and paying it out of this year's budget would be my suggestion because the unknown of next year is greater and you have forty, you'll have forty one thousand you'll be returning. And the the cost in the unknown for next year, you're freeing up six thousand and possibly further down the list, another twenty five, twenty three thousand. Um, so you'd be freeing up close to thirty thousand dollars or or more next year, which could shift. So that would be where I'm at. I wouldn't touch anymore, but that I would I would go with your suggestion of only using the water heater from this year's budget and everything else came out of next year's budget if approved.
Okay, thank you. I'm still trying to wrap my head around what is expected out of next year's budget, so.
All right, so you proposed an amendment to to the motion. Do you accept the uh, amendment, Jonathan?
To to clarify that, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, is there any further discussion of the motion? None. Okay, Jenny?
I vote yes.
Jonathan?
I vote yes.
I abstain. All right, so we have remaining H V A C, the um, the ventilation system. The kindergarten windows, the electrical panel and the fire panel stage two. Maybe we can deal with the fire panel because we had talked about uh, that we could uh, possibly delay that because uh, the fire chief who can close down K E S for fire code violations and and having been notified of them. Or or that is not being up to code. Uh, let us know that we could um, put that off and Chris drafted a letter.
Yep.
Let me get to that here.
Page seventeen.
Yeah, so let's see. So you you've both read that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so uh, I move that we put off the fire panel until uh, of the subsequent year and that we authorize Mr. Andruski to send that letter on our behalf to Chief.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Jenny?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So Chris, please send that letter. So back to back to the facility. So now we've got H V A C. The ceiling E R V, kindergarten windows and the electrical panel. What are what are the thoughts on that?
Well, the electrical panel, it says on hold with stage two of the fire panel.
Well, actually, if I could interject though, um, that electrical panel is a secondary panel um, down like um, or looking to have that down um, like near where Mr. Brackett's office is. And that may be necessary if we're adding additional um, E R V equipment, roof units or um, ceiling fans. That that second panel is likely going to be necessary.
Okay.
See, so it's a necessary add on if we're doing the some of these other things.
I believe it will be, yes. So I I would like to not um, push that one off, that twenty three hundred, because I think it's going to be necessary for the E R E R V project.
Okay, so I move that we authorize the H V A C, the E R V and the electrical panel projects to get done this summer. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? None. Jenny?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Yes, okay, the last question, kindergarten windows. Do we have some background information on that?
Um, this was the next, uh, we've been doing this in stages over multiple years, so um, this was the next replacement that was on our our list.
Okay, are there um?
Can you can you describe for me what the problem is?
Are there any?
How urgent it feels?
Just that they are.
Crafty and old.
Crafty or what what is?
No, well, so this is actually the very large bay window that is in kindergarten. I'm not sure if remember that one. It's the one where the bird feeder sits right outside of and they always, they sort of you know, come around that big window to watch the feeders and uh, that sort of thing. So um, it uh, it's it's definitely old. There's definitely some, um, there is some safety issue concerned with it. I mean, I've already, um, you know, making sure that we're we're not like laying in the window. I think Barbara has some books displayed out there, but it's not, uh, you know, it's not a lounge seat. So um, it's certainly not something that we want to put off too longer, but um, it is something that um, the casings and around it are becoming unstable and.
Are you done?
Okay, I have a question.
With the towels, please.
Jen Mason, Jen Mason, please mute yourself, okay?
Becky, has S S T looked at this? Is this something they could do, replace windows? To save money?
Um, that is not something that we talked with S S T about.
Do you think that's viable? That's usually not in the scope of what they do, Jonathan. Yeah, I don't know. That's what I was asking. Um, usually they'll they'll do small houses or you know, sheds is where they start to do their beginning carpentry for years one and two. Um, the windows, that that's a little bit different. Um, I would not recommend for that. That's fair enough. I really didn't know. I just threw it out there. It's a it's a good thought. It'd be something that I would not recommend knowing that that program and this is what they do. I'll drop that then.
All right, let's see.
Okay, is um, are there further questions or is there a motion regarding the the kindergarten windows?
Taylor has a question.
Taylor, go ahead.
Well, kindergarten window, um, improvement been on the budget, like, like this year or last couple?
Yeah, so I don't remember whether it was, uh, on there last year or not. Uh,
Remember.
Maybe Becky or Chris.
So what we ended up doing is that we had, um, it originally was on last year's and we pulled it out of last year so that it was a smaller window project. We did all the ones in the hallway and then we did the other kindergarten windows. So we did pull this out of last year's and moved it forward to this year.
Okay. Okay. Would the, is it a big heat cooling window?
I mean, it, it is an enormous window, as you know. So.
So with that said, I'm sure there's a, a big loss of.
There is loss of heat for sure.
Vice versa. Okay, thank you.
So basically somebody's gonna have to go in there, reframe it and put new windows in it. So it's a big job.
I, I have a question about that. You have, you've mentioned that, um, in that wing, the heating is not great. And sometimes those kids were wearing jackets. Is the heating issue being resolved with one of these other?
The H-back.
The H-back, okay, okay.
Although I, I will point out that kindergarten has its, has a separate heating unit for, for the last kindergarten classroom is on a separate heating unit than the rest of the wing.
The, the room that this window is in? Okay.
All right, are there any further questions about the kindergarten windows? Is there a motion regarding the kindergarten windows?
Why don't we, uh, I mean, I know, it, it seems maybe not so straightforward on this one and perhaps maybe we don't need to make a decision right now, but we can, um, start the school year and kind of see where we are in September. I think it would be if, if, um, we continue to feel that this is a priority project, if we complete it before the winter begins, it would be most efficient as far as energy loss. And I think maybe we'll have a better understanding of what additional PPE and other things that we'll need by maybe our September or October meeting. This is a very quick project to do once we make the decision. Um, and it can be done over a weekend when the kids are not in the building. Um, we just have to give them enough lead time to make the window. But as far, if, there's no interruption to school as far as completing the project if we decide in September or October that this is something that we, that we want to still move forward with.
I think that's a great point.
Becky's suggestion, I think is a great idea.
I agree.
So then, uh, the suggestion is to table this item and take it up at a later date.
Take it up September.
In September, yeah.
Okay, is everyone okay with that?
Taylor had a question.
I agree.
Uh, estimated cost of the project?
It's six thousand, uh, six thousand dollars. Okay, so we're, we're gonna table that item for now and take it up at a later date.
Yep.
Okay, that takes care of the facilities priority list. Next up, we have board committee reports. So policy, policy CBA.
Okay.
So Jonathan, you want to lead the discussion of the policy?
Basically, this is gonna go through the joint school board again, uh, at the meeting to finalize it and give the final blessing and, and as the policy committee is basically gonna stick to the revisions that we've made. Um, there was some more further discussion with some verbiage. I don't know if it made it in here though, because there's been a lot of going back and forth, so bear with me to see if I can find that email that came in. Where is it? Yeah. Says, thank you very tendively, joint board meeting, June fifteenth. Policy, I'm running, Travis, for confirmation, indeed, the six fifteen, he was adding some verbiage to it. I'm not sure if it made it in there or not. So let me see what he says here. I believe it's the same thing. Are you showing, uh, highlighted? I'm looking at his, um, I just want to make sure we're looking at the same thing.
So when you say his, who is he?
Patrick O'Day, he's one of the, uh, SAU sixteen policy committee members. And he put in some other verbiage on there and I think we're looking at the same thing, but looking at their email to make sure that we're looking at the same one. Um, which is highlighted with yellow, at which time the SAU joint school board can extend or extinguish the administrative, administration authority.
Yes, that's how, that's how that reads in the, in the yellow.
Super, that's the one. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't gonna say one thing and then something shows up in the joint school board meeting and it's different from what we're looking at. So, yes. These are the revisions that we made. Uh, Patrick just sent over this final one. We had some discussion. Write it. And basically he wrote that in, but I know as far as a policies committee is concerned, uh, we are trying to limit the amount of discussion and, and discontent and stick to our guns that we want this passed and to go through the joint board.
So.
You know if it looks.
Yeah, so, um, I, I have some points on this. So one is, as far as I know, there's no specific impediment that this removes. So our board already authorizes a superintendent to immediately close the school in policy EBCD. That's entitled emergency closing. And, uh, in our recent, in our recent experience, I'm, I don't know of an example of a problem that this policy would remedy. But, but actually the most important thing from my, from my point of view is that it's important to preserve local control by not establishing a precedent where the joint board imposes policies on Kensington School District. Um, and, and I also, I, I don't like, uh, many of the word choices and, and the wording with it as well. But anyway, um, given that we're, we're, we have it here to solicit an input, I, I wrote, I rewrote it. Um, use, reusing much of it, but I would like to put forward that suggestion for another version of it. So, uh, and it's, and it's fairly short. It's shorter than what it is right now, but, um, what I wrote is, is the following. So in an emergency situation, defined as conditions that threaten the safety or security of the district, if the school board is unable to meet, the superintendent has the authority to make decisions that best preserve safety and security until a quorum of the board can be convened, at which time this authority will terminate unless extended by the board.
I have a question about that. You're saying the school board. Do you mean the joint board?
I mean, I mean, by changing it to school board, I'm changing it to be, uh, that this, the Kensington School Board, that it's a Kensington School District policy, that the superintendent has the authority to do this in Kensington School District and that the Kensington School Board is making this policy and giving this authority. What I don't want to do is to establish a precedent where the joint school board can make policies that apply in Kensington. So remember that there are only three representatives of Kensington in a board of thirty-three in the joint school board. What I don't want, do not want is for the joint board to be able to make policy that then is, that is, uh, uh, applied in Kensington. So I, so I see this as a broad question. And I don't want to, you know, establish that, you know, that, that, that leads down a road where the joint board then can make other decisions for us. And I think it's a very, it's, it, there are critical issues at stake. For example, last year in our, in our school board, the issue of whether to close KES and merge with East Kingston Elementary School was discussed. Um, I mean, it, it didn't, it didn't, you know, come to a vote, but it was brought up and it was something that was talked about. And I adamantly oppose that. Okay, but, um, that's the kind of, that's the kind of thing where if we start giving authority to the joint board to make decisions that, that apply in Kensington School District could somewhere down the road become a reality. Because I think, and using that example, for example, that there's an expendable trust fund in East Kingston. My recollection is that it's about six hundred thousand dollars and it can only be expended if to expand the school. I think that there, there are folks who would like to close KES and merge it with East Kingston and use that money to expand the school to, to accommodate that. I do not want to see Kensington Elementary School closed. I do not want to lose local control. And so I do not want to, to accept that the joint school board is going to make a policy for Kensington School District.
Okay, and, and the fact that this policy only deals with emergency situations is just, you're talking about precedent.
It just set the precedent. So, so then it becomes, well, okay, well, we set some, we set some other policy. So then we're gonna do some other policy, right? Well, you know, what, once you, once you give it up, right, you know, the, the idea that you make your own policy, well, then it becomes, well, then other policies.
Well, but can't we at any point create our own policy if we don't like something that the joint board stated?
So that's the thing, right? I mean, if you say that the joint board can do that, then they, then they become, uh, the ones who, who make the rules, okay? And then, and then we end up in a situation where, you know, it's ambiguous over who, who really has the authority? Who, who's, 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 who's in charge?
So I think, Tim, your concern with this policy, the way it's written, is that the only two decision-making bodies in this policy are the joint board and the superintendent and that the local Kensington board is not a part of this policy at all.
The main thing is that the joint board is purporting to make the policy. In addition, I, you know, I have further problems, but the very top, the, the worst thing that I think about it is that. But I will say that I don't like it for multiple other reasons.
Well, I, I recall that we did just have the conversation about the other policy that you just referenced, that in the event of emergency, the, um, the joint chairs, um, were, was given additional decision-making authority in, in emergencies as a representative, as a solid representative of the entire joint board.
But in that, but in that case, the Kensington School Board did that, right? So I asked, I asked Jenny and Jonathan if it was okay for me to represent the Kensington School Board and they said yes. And actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna address that later today. But yeah, but the point is, is that they did that. It's not someone else who did it. Kensington.
And in that setting, every district is equally represented by one chair.
Right.
And your concern with the entire joint is that Kensington is not equally represented with just three members.
We have three members who are dedicated to us. There's one representative on the, uh, the co-op board, but that person is actually elected by all the towns, right? So the person is the Kensington representative nominally, but it's actually, but it's actually rep, uh, elected by everyone else. So it would be three out of thirty-three.
Yes, I understand your concern.
Anyway, um, so it, we're not actually voting on this policy here, but, uh, for those reasons, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send to Jonathan my suggested revision of this and I ask that you pass it on to the, uh, to the policy committee. Or would you be okay with that, Jenny and Jonathan?
Yeah, I'll submit it to David and David will submit it out to everybody.
My question is, what happens when there is a SA, an SAU-wide policy, but one of the individual districts wants it to read a different way than all of the other ones?
That happens, that happens fairly regularly, right?
Okay.
A lot of our policies are the same. In fact, perhaps most of them, I'm not sure. But large numbers of them are at least.
Right.
But here and there, districts do make different versions of them.
Okay, I just wasn't sure, I wasn't sure how that was handled.
Yeah, Jonathan, Jonathan and I in the past year have done that with Jen Ramsey. Yeah, that happens.
I, um, I, I like the wording that you came up with for several reasons, so I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right, so then we'll do that. Unless there's further discussion, I'll send that to Jonathan. That'll be, that'll be our input to the continuation of the process.
Tim, do you also want to include your language as part of the minutes for Chelsea?
Uh, yeah, so I moved, I moved that the language that I mentioned, uh, be attached to the minutes and I'll send it to Chelsea.
Can, are you going to specify Kensington School Board?
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
Can the before and after minutes be in there?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Taylor.
Before and after minutes? What do you mean?
There's no.
Verbiage, what you, what it was brought to you as and that what you proposed to change.
Okay, so I am, I amend my motion that I'll send to Chelsea the version that we currently have, the draft version that we currently have and the proposed version, and that those will be posted to the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Jenny?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So the.
I'm, I'm sorry, Tim. Speaking of minutes, I don't see on the agenda, uh, approval of the minutes for the last two meetings.
Uh, it's, it's down below. We're, we're getting to it.
Oh, okay, thanks.
All right, so policy, we're done with that. Um, safety and security.
Um, I have nothing.
Okay, board of selectmen.
I have nothing for that either.
Okay, joint chairs. So there has been no meeting of the joint chair since the last Kensington School Board meeting in April. So I want to, uh, bring, or mention that in April, um, I moved the following. I said, I move that we approve our board chair to represent the Kensington School Board in all SEU sixteen joint board discussions, motions and actions relative to decisions arising from conditions created by COVID nineteen. So it remains the fact that I've used this authority only once, and that was, uh, the, the memorandum of agreement that modifies the teacher contract and that expires at the end of August. And I foresee no further need for it. So I would like to return our district governance to regular order. Consequently, um, I move to discontinue effective immediately the board chair's emergency authority granted at our April meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion of the motion. Hearing none. Jenny?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so I'll notify the joint chairs and the chair of the SEU sixteen board that that authority is done. Bear with me, I'm making a note. Okay, so that was the joint chairs, superintendent evaluation. So the committee met on Monday, worked for a long time, ran out of mental energy. But drafting work, drafting work continues. Uh, at this, at this time, there is no date set for the joint board meeting. But I'll, just as a, a heads up, it's, it's not unlikely that the twenty-second will be proposed as a meeting for that. I don't know that that's gonna work out, but it, that's not unlikely, so.
For the next joint board meeting?
The next joint board meeting. So just, just as a reminder, the joint board delegates to this committee the work of arranging, uh, and, and collecting and initially drafting the evaluation upon consultation with, uh, their various boards and looking at the input and then sends it on to the joint board. The joint board is the only body that issues the final evaluation. Okay, any, any questions about superintendent evaluation? We're getting near the end. Okay, the next item is the approval of the minutes. So first up is the May thirteenth, twenty twenty public board meeting minutes. Are there any suggested amendments to those minutes?
I have none.
Um, hold on one second, please. There was something that, hold on, I gotta get to the right page, sorry. The only, okay. This is, uh, I'm sorry, is this the one where we discussed the, the tomato sale?
Uh, that one, yes. So there was.
So, so, so this is where I'm going to, uh, proclaim loudly and proudly that I'm the new school board member and I need to, I need guidance as to how granular you want these changes to be. So, um, we had talked about, there it is. Uh, there was brief discussion of the library's use of the school parking lot for their tomato sale on May sixteenth. The board determined it was acceptable for the library to use the parking lot as long as they are not using the building at all. We actually said we didn't want them to use the building and grounds. And I think that at this point, it's over. I don't know if it really matters that that's in there, but I don't know how precise we want to be. On the off chance, somebody looked back and said, well, wait a minute, were people using the, you know, the field and the playground, you know, that kind of thing.
Um, the, the school board is the, makes the final decision of what its minutes are and that includes every last comma and. and that includes every last comma and period if they so, if they think that that's important. So if you want to, if, if anyone wants to make a suggested change, no matter what it is, make that and we can talk about it.
I, I would just make that just on the off chance that somebody read that and thought that we had been lax with permission for people to walk around on the field. I don't think that'll happen, but.
So your suggestion is to insert and the grounds?
And the grounds.
Okay, Chelsea, do you have that? Looks like Becky wants to get my attention. Go ahead, Becky.
I needed, because the dog. Actually, what you actually said was stay out of the building and off the playground and track and adhere to social distancing guidelines.
Thank you. So that's what we should add in.
So that's your, that's your proposed amendment?
That because I don't have the meetings recorded, so I don't have the exact verbiage.
Yep, because I had to write the letter, so, or the email. So it was stay out of the building and off the playground and track and adhere to social distancing guidelines.
Okay, so Becky, would you send that to Chelsea?
Yep, got it.
Thank you. All right, so there's a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Jenny?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Yes, so the public, May thirteenth, public board meeting minutes are approved. So the May thirteenth, non-public board meeting minutes.
I also have a change there. On the second page of that, it actually lists Jennifer Ramsey's name instead of mine.
Aha, good catch.
That happens twice. So on this one and also on the last, the last meeting we had. The, what was it, five twenty-six? Okay, so I have it written down that it was on page twenty-three of the packet and then the same on the page twenty-six of the packet.
All right, let's just handle them one at a time. So right now, you're suggesting your, your amendment is change Jennifer Ramsey to Jennifer Leonard. Is there a second?
Second. I'm suggesting that. I can't second it. Somebody else asked.
Second it.
Okay, discussion, hearing none. Jenny?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Yes, okay, with that change. All right, now we have the public board meeting from May twenty-six. May twenty-six, public board meeting. Are there any suggested amendments?
No.
No.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none. Jenny?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Yes. The minutes, not public board minutes of May twenty-sixth are approved. The non-public board minutes of May twenty-sixth. Are there any suggested amendments? Oh, wait, there's a Jennifer Ramsey thing again.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the minutes, changing Ramsey to Leonard. Are there any other suggested changes? No. So is there a second?
Did you move? I'll second.
Yeah, I'll consider myself moved second. All right, discussion.
I abstained because I wasn't there.
Okay, so Jenny, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jonathan, you abstain. Yes. Okay, and I vote yes. All right, so the non-public board meeting, and let's see, pupil-related matters? There are none that I know of. Are there any other items that we didn't cover? As far as I know, we've done everything. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Discussion, hearing none. Jenny?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Yes. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Got a lot done. Thank you.